Thank you once again. I would like to now call to order the town council meeting. Regularly scheduled town council meeting for November 19th, 2024. We're here at the Robert E. De Leo, Robert E. De Leo Senior Center. The minutes from October 29th have been circulated. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Vice President Belcher, second by Councilor DeRozan. Any discussion on the motions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Public comment?
Do a roll call?
I'm sorry, I thought we were just continuing the meeting. We'll do a roll call vote.
Councilor Tassiniere?
Here.
Councilor Costigan?
Here.
Councilman Munson?
Here.
Councilor DiMarco? Councilor Aiello?
Here.
Councilor Swob? Councilor DeRozan?
Here.
Vice President Belcher?
Here.
President Wittery?
Yeah.
Public comment?
Hello?
Yes.
Cassie Woodhouse, Precinct 6. I had some stuff, just in case we had public comment before the vote, but we're past that now. So I just want to thank the councilors for participating in these conversations, but I hope that some of you do some searching and thinking about the process that took place over this past year, because I think that a greater effort to educate people ahead of time about the difference between zoning and building would have gone a long way to a lot of the panic that was happening around this issue. And I think some folks still don't understand the difference between zoning and what is built. Most of the buildings in our town have been here since before zoning existed in this community and are denser than the zoning that was required. And I think it's really important for our zoning to match what is here in the context of that community that we are living in. I also think that it has been really weird getting to know this community that I'm raising my child in and that we're going to be a part of for a long time, when my first interaction with some people is them screaming, "Where am I from?" It's a really strange experience. And these folks are my neighbors, and they're going to see me around. I'm part of the PTO. We're doing community cleanups. We're doing community events. I want to get to know the people in this town, and I think that there are a lot of really good people here. I hope people can, like, take a step back and not focus on fears that are out in some distant future, like a plane crashing in the middle of town. I think we have to think about the likelihood of these outcomes versus the more realistic and more direct and concrete outcomes when we do make a decision that is going to have impact on this community. We have an override that didn't pass, and we have one more chance at it. And I have heard from people that various comments were made that we'll just find the money. We don't have the money to find. And voting no on that planning board proposal that had zero impact on us only puts us farther behind the ball on managing our budget. There are elections next year. People have to pull papers. And I hope you all think about the choices you made very seriously, because the rest of the community will be as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dowd.
Jack Dowd, Precinct 1. Thank you, Mr. President. I made a public comment at the last meeting, I believe. And I've asked many times that my comment not be clarified by anybody on the town council. I've said this six or eight times in the past couple of years. My last comment concerned the land that was given away by the town on Court Road. One of the councilors said, "We never give land away." And I said, "Well, yes, we do. We've already done it." Susan Swob wants to know about the public stairs, public walkways, public lanes, so I'm offering her my help. And I will give it to her for the December 3 town council meeting. After I commented, and I've asked many times, for anybody on the town council that wants to say something about my comment, is to put it on the next agenda so it can be discussed. When I said that, that the land was given away, Mr. Munson made a gesture like this, that there was something wrong with me. I want an apology from him to everybody in the town, everybody in this room, and to the town council for making that gesture. Do I get an apology, Mr. Munson?
I think you misstated the dates, and I was not involved in any of the votes.
We're not reacting to any public comments right now.
All right. I want an apology.
Anything else?
No apology? Well, then this meeting is out of order.
Okay.
You've done in the past when Mr. Aiello made more gesturing after I commented on something that he thought was nonsense, and he said was nonsense at a meeting. And Mr. Aiello apologized for making those comments at the time. It should be the same for Mr. Munson. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Celeste?
Celeste Barret-Uit, Precinct 1. Interesting outcome tonight. I guess I do have some questions. I kind of levied them at the last meeting, and I guess I'll just repeat. Where does this leave us now, now that we have not supported the planning board's plan? Does it go back to a respin, or does it go back to, as Councilor Aiello inferred, a referendum vote locally? Like to understand that. I'd like to understand where the money is going to come from for a lawsuit. Should we be sued when we find ourselves out of compliance and out of time by the state? And then I'd also like to counter a question that was posed by a couple of councilors tonight with another question. Question that arose more than once in comments prior to the vote were, why would folks that support the 3A initiative aimed at increasing housing units conversely support a proposal that offers no additional units? To answer for myself, and I didn't start it, yes. I started at 882. Where are we going to put them? What does it mean, and what are the impacts? And I need more information. Several months later, I feel like I have more information. I know the initial spin with the initial round with the consultant circled a whole lot of areas. We could do a whole lot of development. I think on the second round, the consultants realized that that wasn't really our goal to create a whole lot of new development. I think our goal was to substantiate that Winterpitt has already done the work. It's validated. We've already done the work. So that left us with a zero additional unit proposal. So my counter question is, why would the folks who say no, based on concerns over burden of an additional 882 units, oppose a proposal that proposes zero units? That is the question that I'm left with. I think that as a member of the Climate Commission, having very close visibility to just a fraction of the numbers that we're dealing with, I think 50 million is very conservative, John. I think it's going to be much more than that, especially at the outset to execution. As someone who works in construction and development, you never end up with the numbers you start with. So, and a nod to Pat's acknowledgement that with the new administration that we're going to be faced with in January, the very first thing they're going to do is start hacking away at any kind of resources aimed at climate impacts and, you know, things that they don't really believe in as an administration. I think it behooves us now to position ourself to avail ourself of resources and grants and goodwill that exists before they can make those changes. I plan to be very involved in the steps going forward if it comes to a referendum vote. I plan to be leading the way to advocate for accepting this proposal and also to not invalidate the work that's been done by the planning board. I think that's going to be an issue, and I'm concerned about folks wanting to resign after doing all that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sacco.
Put this thing on. Todd Sacco, Precinct 2. I'll remind you again, the only precinct in Winterpitt that got it right this election. We voted for President Trump and not for Lydia Edwards. Thank you very much. Couple of things I want to touch on that were mentioned earlier this evening. Mr. DeRozan's impassioned speech regarding his conversation that I was here for with Mr. Boyce, mostly true, but he conveniently leaves off the part where, "At this time..." The whole point, and this answers Celeste, should answer your question too, Celeste. The whole point of us on the no side is we do not trust the state government, especially in their behavior, crushing us lawsuits, making demands, a poorly written bill that was passed in the wee hours of the night that they're suddenly folding on. Every community that's passing it is passing this paper compliance. Nonsense. It's utter nonsense. I hope that answers your question. I also want to address the shock that most of you in this room had when you saw Harris lose. You must have also known that this was because of how you talk down to us and don't listen to us, that we're stupid, we're garbage, and it's here again tonight. We don't know. We're jumping into something we know nothing about. We should study more things. You're not endearing yourselves to us. You're just creating more of a divide. And I'm not going to take kindness lessons from someone who gave me the finger in one of our, one of our precinct meetings. You owe us an apology for accusing the 3A people of doing whatever it is you accused us of. Your decorum is for shit, and so is yours. Get your act together.
Next. Decorum for you. Any other public comment?
Good evening. Carol Ficella from Precinct 4. Thank you for everyone who's done all the work and effort over these last many, many months. However, I feel I need to state a couple of things that I think are inaccuracies that keep getting repeated. I want to first by saying that we understand the difference between zoning and building. I realize they're proposing zoning. The question is, what happens after that zoning is approved? It means development. The very nature of 3A is to increase housing, increase occupancy. Very simple. Three paragraphs in that law, and it's very clear. We need to address the fact that you say there's no new units. That is absolutely false and inaccurate. 882 zoned units are the minimum. There is nothing in that law, and no one has presented to us what the maximum could be. I've said this before, and I'll repeat it. Fort Heath, privately owned, one person, could turn around and put more units, not because it burns down, not because it's subdivided by land, as an extension on what exists there. There's a lot of land there with parking. That parking could be taken over, and a wing could be put on there. No restriction, very little say by the planning board. It's all under state control, which says, no limit on the number of bedrooms, no limit on the number of occupants, no special permitting, and no variances, and no discretionary approval. That means the state has control over more development, and it will happen because greed takes over, money is made, and developers are happy. And where does that leave us? You're false in thinking there's no requirement for new development. It may not be the minimum, but certainly the maximum can be pursued. Regarding funding, there is no guaranteed funding. Verbally hoping, you are now competing with 350 communities in Massachusetts for the same dollars, and the state is broke. And ironically, you're saying, "No new units." Do you expect the state to turn around and give us money for no development? Why would they possibly consider doing that? They have other communities that may be doing development that they're going to reward. We're not going to get rewarded, whether you say yes or no. The yes isn't going to get rewarded, because you're not developing anything, or so you claim. But there will be development. Lastly, the website for the Communities Act, the MBTA, we've been asking for months about the stand of condo documents in relation to 3A. Well, the answer's been found, and Suzanne Swob addressed it. If you go to the question and answer site, they ask about changes in property or leases. One point, it says right here, multifamily housing can be developed as of right. That's the key word, "as of right." Should a property owner choose to develop? So you made fun of us when we said Seal Harbor can make more bedrooms and have unlimited occupants. It's right here. It can happen, and it will if the people want it to. It's their choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, correspondence. Denise?
The correspondence mainly I had today was all for the 3A vote with the yes and no's.
Thank you. Committee reports? None. School department report. The school committee met last evening at the Harvey Hearing Room. The major topic of discussion was the override and next steps. There was a budget subcommittee prior to the school committee, and they're in the process of deciding on next steps, on a potential further override question on a ballot, probably in the early spring. But they have to go through the budget again with a fine-toothed comb with the superintendent, look at other financing options, and they will be coming back, I am sure, in a meeting in December with more on that subject. And the town manager's report has now been issued electronically. We feel that this is a more fluid way that everyone in town gets to hear exactly. I'll read exactly what the town manager is asking. The councilors had that in advance, and the town manager is now open to questions on anything in that report or anything on an operational basis in town. Councilor Swob?
Tony, you said that Cheryl McCormick is here?
Yes. Yeah, one of the items in the town manager report, we do have our new assistant town manager Cheryl McCormick, who's here tonight. Cheryl, if you want to say hi. Started on Monday. Happy to have you on board. Already getting to work on creating a spreadsheet for grant applications, and I get looking to work forward to working with the planning board and the ZBA and, you know, getting some more procedures and policies in place. So we're excited to get to work. So more to follow on that. I do want to highlight one thing. I know we've been getting some phone calls in Town Hall with regarding to the letter that went out with electric aggregation plan that this council approved. We will have a meeting on December 2nd on that, but I did want to clarify a couple of things. Anyone that's already chosen a third-party vendor does not, okay, again, this is right from the company, additionally, customers using third-party suppliers are not automatically enrolled in the Winterpitt aggregation. If you're already, if you're not using National Grid, and you're already in another third-party vendor, you don't get kicked out of that. They can choose to come over, but that's a choice that they can make, so they don't get taken out. The other thing, it is an opt-out program, and one of the reasons, and people are, you know, questioning that obviously, that, you know, hadn't heard about it or weren't up to speed. But one of the reasons we were able to get the low rates is it's the, you know, the Mass General Law that drives this. Mass General Law, Chapter 164, Section 134A. The fact that it is an opt-out program is what allowed us to be competitive and get the low rates that we got, you know, which is on average, you know, two to three cents lower than National Grid currently, and then locked in for 35 months. So those rates, and you can, you know, choose the Winterpitt Basic, the Winterpitt, sorry, I have it here in front of me here. Winterpitt Basic, the default is the Winterpitt Standard, which has, as I said before, has the 10% voluntary renewable energy credit at 13.34 cents per kilowatt hour. And then the Winterpitt Plus, anybody that wants to, you know, purchase more renewable energy credits up to 100%, you could pay 14.220, which is still lower than the National Grid rate. But you would have to, if you do nothing and stay in the program, and you wanted to change the Winterpitt Basic, you would need to, you know, go on the website or contact the company to change back. So, Councilor Elliott, a question there?
Yeah, so just for clarification on, so if I already had a third-party provider that was not National Grid, I cannot just ignore it? If I want to be in the program, I have to actually do something? Is that...
Yeah, they have to opt into our program, because you don't get kicked out of your program, but you have to opt into ours. Yes.
As opposed to just automatic opt?
Correct. Anyone in National Grid that hasn't picked a third-party vendor is automatically in. They won't have to opt out. Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Tony, I do think there's some confusion about it. I mean, several people have asked me. They don't quite understand it. So, December 2nd, you're going to do a Zoom meeting?
Correct. There'll be a meeting in the Harvey Room. Certainly, public can attend, but it'll also be on Zoom as well, so people can participate and ask questions.
I'm going to try to post that in, you know...
Yeah, we've got it on our website. It'll be in my town manager report.
But sometimes, yeah, but people...
I get it. Not everyone pays attention.
They got a letter, and all of a sudden, they're thinking, "Oh, my heavens. What am I going to do?" So, there is confusion there. So if, I don't know if you could put anything else on the website, but that would be helpful. But I think...
And we're answering the questions as they come in. A lot of people, once they understand it and, you know, see it, it's, they actually save money, so.
I hear that National Grid, is National Grid, because of the competition, thinking about now lowering their rates soon? Is that...
I haven't heard that. I have not heard that.
Yeah. It's all rumor. I just, that's just what we're saying. So if National Grid were to lower their rates, they can't change back, though. They're in for 36 months, once they decide, whatever they decide.
Our rates are locked in, right? But people can opt in or out. Like, they can commit, and if they don't like it and they want to go back to National Grid, they certainly have that option.
At any time?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Is that on the website? I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's an opt-out. I mean, you're originally in, and then you have to opt out, but you can obviously come back in. I mean, the goal is to get as many people in as we can, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Munson?
Thank you, Mr. President. How you doing, Tony?
Good.
Congratulations on finding yourself an assistant town manager. Welcome. Excited to have you on board. Thank you. So now that she's on board, are we, what would it, is it in our horizon to do a master plan review or a master plan?
It's day two, John. We'll work on that. We'll bring, you know, we probably won't get it done tomorrow. But no, we'll come back with a council chair. We'll talk. I mean, obviously, the council will have to, you know, drive that, let us know what they want to do, and then we can work on getting that done, absolutely.
Well, some of the numbers that were brought up tonight were very interesting, and I appreciate, and this is the question I've wanted to know for quite some time, and what have we allowed? Pre-3A, how many new units have we allowed to be developed over the last five years? I'm not guessing you know that number off the top of your head.
No, I do not.
And I'm not asking for it. But what I'd like to ask from you and from the rest of the council is to set some kind of parameters to make sure that regardless of 3A, to just not be overdeveloping, and to make sure that we're in control of the parking spots, the amount of cars that are on the road. And can you give us some kind of suggestions on what has been done in other towns and what you've been a part of that can be done to curb that? For example, has there ever been an audit of those that have already gotten parking variances, or that people aren't actually living up to what they had promised? Just asking for examples of ways to control the overdevelopment and parking problem.
Again, that'll be part of a bigger conversation later, absolutely.
Yeah, I think those are policy issues which we need to put on a agenda and discuss as a council. Councilor Tassiniere?
With respect to the financial analysis that Councilor Aiello mentioned earlier, we'd like to get that going as soon as possible, so.
We did get the price for that. I think it was between $15,000 and $18,000, so I certainly can bring that proposal forward. At the next council meeting, you guys can decide if you want to refer it to finance and find funding for it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilor DeRozan?
Thank you, Council President. I just briefly want to add my welcome to Cheryl. Cheryl, for those of us, and many of us up here and folks attending tonight, have been chomping at the bit, to say the least, to give a shot in the arm to our grant-writing and securing capability. So I want to both welcome you and thank Tony, who has been trying to do a lot of jobs at once. And we're so happy to have you, not just as a council, but all of the commissions, including the Climate Commission and the other boards. We're so glad to have you and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
I really appreciate that, Cheryl, and every constituent and all boards. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Mr. Council President, if I could, I just, I know we've talked about it earlier, but I just wanted to, one of the items in my town manager report, and I just, you know, kudos, and I'm making sure you're going to do it too, is the special thanks to Denise and her team, and all the registrars, and the voters, and the election workers. I mean, it was no easy task, so. On the election.
We have that on the agenda later, and to delve into the numbers a little bit.
We can do it again.
Thank you. There has been no policymaking committee meeting since our last council meeting or CDICR meeting. I did want to put into discussion, middle school discussion and possible demolition. I know I've been talking to town manager about this, trying to get a accurate cost. I mean, we have some estimates that were about $700,000, $800,000 for demolition, and probably another $400,000, $500,000, $600,000 in remediation for asbestos and such. And that is something that we want to do sooner rather than later, and I'd like to put it, you know, I think the council doesn't seem ready to have a consensus on a total revamp, but I would like to see us discuss demolition and possibility. There seems to be some consensus on potentially selling four or five townhouse lots at the top of the hill. If nothing else, reclaim the money that it might cost us for demolition, if it costs us that money, but get us to a point where we have a clean site, where people see progress going, where it saves us a few bucks a year, where we still would have a home for pox and rec, where we would still have some potential development there in a small amount that would close off that neighborhood. So, and I know Councilman Munson has asked to have this continue to be on the agenda, so hopefully we'll have a bigger discussion on that at the next council meeting, and potentially some ideas for funding to, for demolition. Councilor Aiello, and then Councilor Swob.
Just a suggestion. I mean, I agree we need to start moving forward on some elements here, but we don't have a formally adopted master plan about what we want to do with the site. There's a whole bunch of different ideas that have been floating around, but none of them are serious with respect to locating parking and thinking about circulation and all that stuff. If we're going to be looking for the demolition funding, I would imagine a good comprehensive physical plan probably costs us around $50,000 would be my guess, you know, traffic and all that stuff, to add that into the budget and just start a process to try to see if we can all agree on a site plan and understand where we're heading there for, when we take something down, how much room we could provide if we decide to follow the president's suggestion about a row of homes up at the top, you know, how much real estate we can give up. And that doesn't preclude other possibilities. So I would just suggest we allocate in the Hunt for Dollars, and actually 50 grand for that to hire a sort of an architectural firm or land use plan or anything.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Swob?
I received a, I think I received a memorandum from Mr. Schmidt that talked about Lydia Edwards' plan in the budget for monies for demolition in the middle school. Is that right?
There is money that's tied to housing, I believe.
Is it all tied to housing? Or is there, I thought there was a million tied to, I, well, Mr. Schmidt just said, "Do you have to check with Tony about that?" So he doesn't know either.
I spoke with Senator Edwards briefly about it on Veterans Day, and we need to get the exact language, because I, my understanding was it was tied to housing. Like, if we had a housing project that we had proposed, then we would have access to some funds and, you know. But again, it's a bond bill, so you'd have to, you know, get that funded. You know, it's not approved until the governor signs off on it. So, based on the vote tonight, not sure if that'll...
See, I thought that, I thought there were two different issues. One was in the budget, and one was a separate issue about housing. So I thought there was just money with demolition with no strings.
I haven't seen that language yet, but we're going to ask for it. So, you know, more to follow, but I haven't seen the exact language to double-check that.
Make sure we get that, because it could be. I know.
And we also have a line item with Congresswoman Clark's office at the federal level that for last year's budget, which the feds still haven't approved yet, if that gets approved, they did move that earmark forward. You know, whether or not it gets funded or not, we'll find out, you know, when the final budget comes out, but that's still a potential option for funding as well.
Great. Thanks.
Just Councilor Aiello on a follow-up in regards to Councilor Swob's comments.
Yeah, that's a great question that you posed, and I think on all these things, that's the value of having a physical master plan, because we could see what the requirements... There's some money in the housing bill, some money in the economic bill, development bill, and some money coming from Catherine Clark's earmarking. And we just, as we're doing this physical planning, make sure we understand from each one of them the specific requirements about what makes it eligible to use the money in terms of final end use. We may find some of the sources of funding are incompatible, what we want to do, and some are compatible. But it all starts with sort of trying to develop an informed physical plan.
Thank you. All right. New business. There are two motions that are going to be referred to finance. One is that the town council appropriate the sum of $368,000 to pay for the design and engineering costs of water main replacements. And the second is that the town council... And the second is that the town council vote to authorize the town to accept and expend the amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand in the form of a grant from Clean Water Trust. I will refer both those items to finance, and we will have a, finance will hopefully have a meeting before our next scheduled council meeting. We also have, uh, tax classification for fiscal twenty-five. Town Manager Marino.
Again, this will be referred to finance for a meeting. Uh, we'll plan on having our consultant come in in, uh, the next meeting, and finance hopefully can meet before then. Um, whether we get the council and, uh, representative in person, or we can do it via Zoom if you want to meet right before the council meeting, but, um, you know, Nate Crane will come in similar to last year, uh, give an update on where we stand and what the tax rate's gonna be moving forward, so.
Excellent. So we refer a tax classification for fiscal twenty-five to finance also. Fire station, next, uh, discussion and next steps. Um, the plan here is to have this on the agenda at our first meeting, uh, at our next council meeting to potentially have a discussion and vote on a selection as, in terms of a site. After that, we will go back to the design and go through the process, come back, have a scheduled date for a potential debt exclusion, again, in spring, late spring. Um, talk about all the pertinent effects from that, where the location would be, how it would affect the cost and such. We did have, the town manager's office, um, did do a survey through the town. Uh, there was roughly, roughly, roughly eleven hundred and change in response, and it was roughly fifty-five, forty-five in terms of percent where the public chose the, um, middle school site. Um, we will have a further discussion on that as a council. The council will ultimately vote on a location. Uh, we will discuss the cost, the impact, how it could potentially change either site, uh, and that will be on the agenda at the next council meeting. Town council would also like to make a, uh, a motion, if the council agrees, that the town council requests that the town's legislative delegation to file legislation, legislation requesting discounted toll rates for private passenger vehicles in Winthrop. This has been discussed before in the past. I don't think we've ever actually gone to the point of asking a legislative, um, body to file specific legislation for Winthrop. Um, these discounts are offered to East Boston and to Chelsea, and the reasoning has pretty much always been that's where the properties come up. The tunnel comes up in East Boston, the bridge lands in Chelsea. Um, I know, I was reading the Revere, Revere Journal last week and saw a similar discussion on their agenda, and, uh, you know, Winthrop, I feel, gets left behind in a lot. We get forgotten in a lot of ways. We're a small, little peninsula that sometimes people, um, don't see the effects, but, um, in terms of the congestion, the traffic, this to me is a no-brainer to ask. I mean, I know, I believe East Boston residents pay forty cents to go through the tunnel and over the bridge, and we pay over three bucks. So, um, I will, if, I get permission from the council, ask our legislation to fi, ask our legislators to file legislation requesting that we get discounted toll.
Is there a motion?
Motion?
Yes.
Motion.
Motion by Consul Swob, second by Consul Munson. Any discussion on it or comments? Consul Tesanari.
Just to clarify, uh, the residents of East Boston get a discount on the tunnel, the residents of Chelsea get a discount on the bridge. They don't each get both.
Each get both.
Right. And the North End gets the tunnel and Charles Town gets the bridge. They don't get both.
And Winthrop gets nothing.
Winthrop gets nothing.
So we would ask.
A sad state of affairs, it seems, that we just continue.
Well, we do know that we will get nothing if we don't ask, and so that was the thought. Um, I would ask, if, if so approved by the council, I would ask the town manager to write a letter that we would approve at our next council meeting.
Absolutely.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you. Appointments, there are three appointments, I believe, this evening. There, the town council accept the appointment made by Town Council President Letery to appoint Celeste Ribeiro Hewitt to the Commissioner of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. It's motion, motion by Vice President Belcher, second by Consul DeRoz. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Also, that the town council accept the appointment made by Council President Letery to appoint Susan Smith and Nancy Tufo to the commercial, Commission on Disabilities for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Motion by Vice President Belcher, second by Consul Munson. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. I'd like to go piggyback on town manager and talk a little. I love talking about numbers, so talk a little bit about the election. Um, nationally, I believe the turnout was roughly sixty-four percent nationally voter participation. In Winthrop, we were sixty-six point three percent, so a little higher. Um, I think that's just a testament to people getting involved. Um, I think it's great to see. Also, we had ninety-four hundred and fifty-one votes. We had forty-two hundred and change. Forty-five percent of those votes taking place before Election Day, so early voting or in-person voting, absentee voting, and we had over fifty-two hundred on Election Day. The ballot was not easy to me to understand. It was long, it was cumbersome, it was time-consuming to go through the questions if people weren't prepared. Uh, but again, to Denise and, and all the election workers, I just heartfelt thanks from the whole committee. Um, usually in Winthrop, you know, on a, on a town election, we get maybe fifty-eight hundred votes. We did have nine thousand votes earlier in an election, uh, at a presidential election, I believe in sixteen or twenty, um, but the difference there was there was such a higher percentage of votes going that day. Um, with the ability, I know the, the precinct heads, they get, you know, we, we have the ability to, to scan the ballots that are coming in, and we know, so we could tie it to a name, but we don't open the ballots until Election Day. And so you see, and when you were voting, you might have gone to the tables and you see hundreds of ballots there, and usually when it's a slower election, the election personnel have the opportunity during the day to just throw in ballots, the absentees, so they can get caught up. This did not happen really, and usually, you know, you're standing there and there's a group of people outside the door waiting for eight oh two, eight oh three, eight oh four, and the, the little tabulators will come out and you pretty much know. This time, I, I mean, I was up and Denise was texting me at one-thirty in the morning, and they were still there, and, and, and shout out to all, but again, I see Karen Chavez in the back, and, um, I, I remember calling Denise saying, get Karen and tell her to go home. It's too late, but, um, again, a huge thank you. The results didn't come out until early in the morning, but that was just because of the work that they had to do to put in all the absentee ballots, but, um, it, it, it is great to see and, and consistent participation between all precincts. Um, again, having the five polling stations at the middle school site, um, I think worked out really well. I think the fact, again, that it was a, a multi-page ballot and the fact that people were reading questions for the first time, a lot of them in the ballot box or in the ballot booth, took some time. Um, but the personnel were very professional, they were very courteous, they were keeping things going, so again, just a heartfelt thank you from the council for that. Public comment, round two. Yes. You can stand, please, at the mic.
Just two things. Um, number one, I really like the idea of a master plan.
Again, just naming precincts.
Carl, Rothenhaus, precinct six. Uh, idea of a master plan's a great idea. I recently attended a master plan meeting for the Alway Quadrangle, which is like northwestern Cambridge. It's not really a place that's talked about. It's mostly industrial sites, but they're turning it from industrial sites into like an actual neighborhood. That's not something maybe to look at, just as, you know, um, inspiration about how to do a master plan for this area. Because it's the same thing, it's going from something that's, you know, underused to something that's actually, you know, could be a community. Um, also, in terms of, you know, the reduced rates to the tunnel, it'd be nice, um, I think of our connection, our direct connection to Boston as the ferry, and so, um, I think maybe that would be another thing to ask for, would be the ferry. Free ferry rides, free, free to Boston, that might be, that's, that's our good direct connection to downtown Boston. Like landing, we have the ferry landing here, so maybe ask for the ferry being free rather than just the tunnel, because you still have to drive through Boston to get there, so that might make traffic worse.
Thank you. Mr. Dowd.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jack Dowd, precinct one. This demolition topic that you're discussing tonight. I've been asking for a survey on the property on Pauline Street, Walden Street, Ingleside Park, et cetera, since then. Two thousand and seventeen. There's not been a survey done. I contacted two surveyors to do the survey at the corner of Pauline and Waldemar. The general consensus is it's cost about five thousand dollars to do a survey of that corner lot. Some research said it's one point one nine acres. Essentially, uh, ten house lots, maybe eleven. You can't sell that property without doing a survey. It's a very simple process. Survey the one property and the rest of the property around that, Walden Street, Lincoln Street, Brookfield, et cetera, is Ingleside Park, which cannot be developed unless it goes through the process of Article ninety-seven disposition of land. That's the process we should be taking. Sell the piece of property with the money in your pocket for repairs around town and, and take it from there. You cannot build anything or change the character of Ingleside Park unless you go through Article ninety-seven disposition of land. I've been saying this for seven years. Other people have different ideas. You want to put another ice rink or a complex, uh, many things that don't conform to the law. The law is, you can't change anything about Ingleside Park unless you go through the process. Survey the property, find out how much it's worth, sell the property. Don't talk about demolition. Let the people that buy the property concern themselves with the demolition of the property. There'll be no liability to the town because you don't own it anymore. Otherwise, there could be a lot of problems down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen.
Karen Chavez, precinct two, I just want to expound on the election. Um, as of one precinct five, I will tell you that the process between walk-ins and, uh, voting of voters, about eighteen hundred voters. That's thirty-six hundred ballots, and every single ballot that went through that machine took twelve seconds to clear. So you can imagine the length of time that people in line had to wait to get to the machine to vote, plus everybody in precinct five who stayed until eleven-thirty or twelve-thirty that night processing all those ballots. Also, I, you know, I have to thank Denise, um, Merrill Hubble, Joe Peterson, and your support, about your support. We will be nobody. And also to Billy Calhoun, who is our custodial support down there. He sets us up, he makes sure that we have everything that we need, plugs, et cetera, et cetera. And the two police officers that day, I can't say enough about them. Um, I've already gone through the gym to, to thank them. And also in precinct five, we had a medical emergency, you know, talk of everything else. We had to call nine one one. When the fire walked in, nobody even knew they were there. They walked in, took care of the situation. The patient was seen by action ambulance and transported out. There was no destruction, disruption to a voter or anybody else. I can't, I, I just can't think of the people enough. I've been doing this for ten years. I have never seen what we saw that day. It was, how was, I don't know how else to explain, that to explain it. I know the other comment is, I am disappointed in the electronic town manager's report. I don't think, it might be files of council, but nobody else knows what's in that report until we get a chance to read it later on.
It, it, just for clarification, it is in the packet, so it's online.
For us.
Nope, it's in, with the agenda, online.
I do not see it. I do not see it in the agenda. Sorry.
Yeah, it was, it's in the package. Now, now we're doing the packages, not just the agenda.
I mean, I thought the, everything else was on, but I did not get that. I got the election summary.
Any other public comment? Yes. Much appreciated. Any other comments? Yes, Tom.
Tom Dederian, precinct three. Uh, and I noticed that we have a, a, a new assistant manager, grant writer, and I want to make a, a pitch, uh, as the new tree warden, uh, to keep an eye open for any grant money available that we can apply to our urban forest and trees. Thank you.
Very much, Tom. Public relations, we have annual chamber Christmas tree lighting, November twenty-ninth, from four to six P.M., with the lighting of the trees at five-thirty, and a visit from Santa. Town hall holiday hours, they will be closed on November twenty-seventh at noon and closed on November twenty-eighth. Closing also on Christmas Eve at noon, closed on Christmas Day, open on the twenty-sixth from eight to four-thirty. Also closed on New Year's Eve at five, at four-thirty, closed on New Year's Day and open on January second from eight to four-thirty. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion by Vice President Belcher, second by Consul DeRoz. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you, meeting is adjourned. The ayes have it. Thank you, meeting adjourned.